Good morning, I'm glad to be back with you today. Welcome to Bible Study number eight. I hope that you're having a good year thus far. The sunshine is bright and beautiful today, and even though it's a little bit cold, we have nice sunshine. We touched on the subject of the Sabbath briefly as we went through some of our other studies. But today, we're going to dwell a little deeper into the Sabbath. Our next study, Lesson number nine, is also going to be on the Sabbath, but it's going to be the Sabbath, the Seal of God. I haven't received any questions via email, and so I just want to remind you, if you have questions, you can send those to Peggy@countrylifereasteron.com. If you, I don't get any questions, I'm assuming that you're able to go to the Bible and research it out and answer any question that you have, but I'm glad to try to help you on any of those questions that you might have. With that said, let's have prayer and ask the Holy Spirit to join us as we have our study today. Heavenly Father, we ask your Holy Spirit to guide us and direct us, that we might know the truth of your holy word. In Jesus' name, amen. Many people feel that they can't understand the Bible, and that the truths that it holds are just out of their reach. They don't really know how to find the answers. They'll be told one thing, and then later on, they'll be told something else. But today, I want to encourage you, it doesn't have to be that way. You can know the truths of the Bible, but it takes a little bit of time, and it takes a little bit of research. But the truths are out there for anyone who wants to search them out. Isaiah 28:10 says, "Precept upon precept, precept upon precept, line upon line, line upon line, here a little and there a little." So we have to go here and there. We have to study out the subject in the Old Testament and in the New Testament before we get the full answer. And on many topics, I had to study them out two or three times before I really thoroughly understood them, to the point that I was satisfied that I had the truth. Acts 17:11 says, "These were more noble than those in Thessalonica," in that they received the word with all readiness of mind and searched the Scripture daily to see whether those things were so. The background of Acts 17 is that Paul and Silas were preaching in Thessalonica, and they were having great success, but the Jews did not want them there. And so many people were led astray because the Jews were fighting what Paul and Silas were trying to teach. And it says, the Bible says, actually, the people in Thessalonica were moved with envy. They did not like what was being preached, and so Paul and Silas went to Berea. And in Berea, the Bible says, "They received the word with readiness of mind." And when they were not sure about what Paul and Silas were saying, they went to the Scriptures and they searched out to find out if what was being preached to them was truth. And that's what the Bible wants us to do. If you have a question, then go to the Bible and search it out. We're told not to believe what people tell us. I don't want you to believe what I tell you. I want you to hear it with an open mind, and go to the Bible and search it out, so that then you will know too, and there will be no question in your mind. If you believe what I tell you, and then somebody else tells you something that sounds just as truthful, you won't know who to believe, and the only way to know is to go to the Bible and see what the Bible says. The Bible says, if it's not according to the Word of God, then it's not truth. 1 Timothy 2:15 says, "Study to show yourself approved unto God, a workman that needeth not to be ashamed, rightly dividing the word of truth." It's always been kind of a puzzle to me that we can go to college to study any profession that we want to study. We can be a doctor, a lawyer, a nurse, a teacher, but we know that if we want those occupations, we have to study to be able to get a degree in that occupation. And then comes the Bible. People will make a decision on the Bible, a pertinent topic, and they have no knowledge of it, and they feel no need to study it out. And I know this firsthand because I was in that very space. For a long time, I felt like I could make decisions on the Bible. I'd never even opened a Bible. I'd never even had a Bible in my hand, and yet I felt no need to have a Bible to be able to make a decision based on Bible information. Another thing that we must remember is the Bible is a collection of instructions to us. We cannot believe in the Old Testament and not the New, or believe in the New Testament and not the Old. It's a book. It's got a beginning and an ending, and we need both halves before we can get a true picture. Isaiah 46:9-10 says, "Remember the former things of old; for I am God, and there is none else. I am God, and there is none like me," declaring the end from the beginning, "and from ancient times the things that are not yet done, saying, 'My counsel shall stand, and I will do all my pleasure.'" So here, we're being told that God's counsel, from the beginning to the end, is going to stand as truth for us, so that we might know the truth. Romans 15:4 says, "For whatsoever things were written aforetime were written for our learning, that we through patience and comfort of Scripture might have hope." So the Bible is our hope. You know, why are we on this earth? You know, what are the answers to those questions? What's going on? What's happening? The Bible has answers for you, and I encourage you to read the Bible. 2 Timothy 3:16 says, "My Scripture is given by inspiration of God, and is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, and for instructions in righteousness." The laws of the United States have been put into place based on Bible laws and principles. Just like any degree we want in college, we must study to learn. We must study the Bible, so that we might understand. The Bible is like a friend. You must spend time with a friend to know a friend, to get close to a friend, to have a relationship with a friend, and the same is with Jesus. If you want to be a friend of Jesus, you've got to know who he is. You've got to know what he's all about. You've got to understand how much he loves you. He doesn't need it to be a friend of yours. He loves you. He's like a father. We need it, so that we can understand who he is and why he is. Now here we go on our journey into the past, to search the Sabbath day, given by God. And we're going to go way back to the beginning of Genesis, to the very beginning of our existence, way before the Jewish people were even known as Jewish people, to carry the message to the world, way back before the Gentiles, way back before any other nationality existed, back before the Tower of Babel, back, back to the first week of creation. In Genesis 2:1, in the beginning, in Genesis, the first chapter of Genesis, in the beginning, God created the heaven and the earth. First, He created light and darkness, and this starts in Genesis 1:5. "And God called the day light; He called the light day, and He called the darkness night; and the evening and the morning were the first day. Then He created the second day, the third day, the fourth day, the fifth day, and the sixth day. And at the end of the week, in Genesis 2:1, God created the seventh day. Thus the heavens and the earth were finished, and all the host of them. And on the seventh day God ended His work, which He had made, and He rested on the seventh day from all of His work. And He blessed the seventh day and sanctified it, because in it He had rested from all of His work, which God had created and made." God had just finished creating the heaven and the earth. He created all the grass, trees, lions, tigers, elephants, birds, cats, insects, ants, wind, water, microorganisms, the sun, the moon, the stars, our solar system. And He had just finished His crowning glory, Adam and Eve. And it says, "Thus the heavens and the earth were finished." We are told He did all of this in six days, and on the seventh day, He rested. Please take note of this word, rested. Throughout the Bible, rested implies God's Sabbath, many places in the Bible. And you have to read it in context to see if it's talking about resting just on a day of the week, or if it's talking about God's Sabbath. There are two very other important words in this scripture that we just read, and it says, "And God blessed the seventh day, and He sanctified it." So blessed means to make holy. So He made this day holy, and then He sanctified it. And to sanctify it means to set it apart for sacred use. This verse alone should explain which day is our worship day, but the Bible is full of other scriptures that are also helpful in describing the Sabbath day. I want to read the verse, this verse that we just read, with the definitions of holy and sacred. So it says, "He blessed and sanctified it." We see that that is holy and sacred, or to set apart. And so reading it again, it says, "Thus the heavens and the earth were finished, and all the host of them. And on the seventh day God ended His work, which He had made, and He rested on the seventh day from all of His work, which He had made. And God made holy the seventh day, and set it apart for sacred, holy use, because in it He had rested from all of His work, which God created and made." So this day was set aside for sacred and holy use. And so if He had changed that day, then He would have changed the sacred and holiness of that day. It's a really simple concept. If an animal wants a meal, he's going to go after the easiest meal he can get, and usually, that's the young, that's the babies. But before they can get a baby, they have to separate it from the adult, or they have to kill the adult. We are children of God, and the only way Satan can get us is if he can separate us from God. If he can convince us that we don't need God, then he can kill us eternally. This is not talking about our physical death here on earth, because we're going to all die. This is talking about eternal death. If Satan can separate us from the God that loves us, the God that's given us instructions in the Bible, the God that's given us a special day and set aside that special day for a special time for us to be with Him. If he can separate us from that, he can cause us to be lost eternally. There's only one thing left, because God's died for us, He's promised us, and He has solidified our eternal life. The only thing left is for us to choose eternal life. We can choose eternal life, or we can choose eternal death, and we do that by our decisions, what we decide to do, who we decide to follow, what we decide to do in our life. We're choosing day by day. There are some that understand this choosing, and they choose Satan's side anyway. In 1 Timothy 4:2, it says, "Their consciences are seared with hot iron." So there are those that their consciences are so seared that God can't even touch their consciences. But for most of us, we fall under Revelation 3:17. It says, "Because we say, 'I am rich; I am increased with goods; I have need of nothing,' we're filled with pride, and we're so comfortable that we don't feel that we need God. For most of us, Satan has so deluded our relationship with the Heavenly Father, we don't understand that he died on the cross, and that we have a choice to choose eternal life." This is exactly where I was as a young woman. One of the greatest lies that he's ever told us is that God's day of rest has been done away with, that we no longer need to follow His day of rest. Remember, the Sabbath was given, the first week of creation, before the Jews, when earth only held Adam and Eve. There were no Jews, no Gentiles, no Americans, no Germans, no Japanese, no Native Americans, no whites, no blacks. In the beginning, God created the days of the weeks, months, years, days, and nights, and yearly cycle. Today, if we look at our calendar, you will see that Sunday is listed as the first day of the week, and Saturday is listed as the seventh day of the week. The calendar is still the same, even 7,000 years later. God named the days of the week, first day, second day, third day, fourth day, fifth day, sixth day, and seventh day, or the Sabbath day, probably so that we wouldn't get mixed up. My husband's mother was a Quaker. They go to church on Sunday, but they call it first-day church and first-day school. They know it's the first day. They're lovely people, but they recognize it, and I thought that was very interesting whenever I got to know her. In fact, the days of the week as we know them today, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, they're named after gods. Sunday is after the sun god, and these are heathen gods. Sunday is after the sun god. Monday is after the moon god. Tuesday is after Tweez's god. Wednesday is after Wooten's god. Thursday is after Thor's god. Friday is after Free's god, and Saturday is named after Saturn. Now I've given you a lot of background on the Sabbath and the days of creation, and so now we're going to go to the Bible, and we're going to study out other scriptures on the seventh-day Sabbath. It's all throughout the Bible, from Genesis to Revelation. There is no doubt, when you study the Bible, what day of the week is God's day that He set aside. We're going to go next to Exodus 28-11. It says, "Remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy. Six days shalt thou labor and do all thy work; but the seventh day is the Sabbath of the Lord thy God. In it thou shalt not do any work, thou nor thy son, nor thy daughter, thy manservant nor thy maidservant, nor thy cattle, nor thy stranger that is within thy gates. For in six days the Lord made heaven and earth, the sea, and all that in them is, and He rested the seventh day. Wherefore the Lord blessed the seventh day and hallowed it." So here, we have another description of the Sabbath day being blessed and hallowed, or set aside for God's holy use. The book of Exodus is called Exodus because God's people had been in exile in Egypt for 400 years, and now, they had told him before, they didn't want his laws. They wanted to be free of him. He had left them. They had ended up in, as slaves to the Egyptian people, and now they're crying to be released from that, and God is taking them out of Egypt. He's heard them. He's taking them out of Egypt after 400 years. We're going to fast-forward now to Luke 4:14-16, and it says, "And Jesus returned in the power of the Spirit into Galilee, and there went out a fame of him through all the regions around Bout. And he taught in their synagogues, being glorified of all. And he came to Nazareth, where he had been brought up, and as was his custom, he went into the synagogue on the Sabbath day and stood up for to read." This scripture is important because it verifies that Jesus also kept the Sabbath during His time on earth. Acts is a book written approximately 30 years after the death of Jesus. We're going to read an account of Paul in Acts 13:14. It says, "When they departed from Perga, they came to Antioch in Pasidia, and went into the synagogue on the Sabbath day and sat down." Verses 42 and 44 says, "And when the Jews were gone out of the synagogue, the Gentiles besought that these words might be preached to them the next Sabbath. And the next Sabbath day came almost the whole city together to hear the word of God." So here we have an account of both the Jews and the Gentiles, almost the whole city coming together on the Sabbath to be preached to. This is 30 years after Jesus died. These verses help us to understand that the Sabbath was not changed at Jesus's resurrection. Now we're going to go back to Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, and we're going to read the accounts of Jesus's resurrection, because that is one of the scriptures that's used, because Jesus was risen on Sunday. And so they honor Sunday as the day He was risen on. But let's take a look at what actually happened when Jesus died. We're going to start in Matthew 27:57. "When the evening was come, there was a rich man of Arimathea named Joseph, who also himself was one of Jesus's disciples." So when evening was come, they're talking about Friday evening here. You can go back and read the account. And then Matthew 28:1 says, "In the end of the Sabbath, as it began to dawn toward the first day of the week, came Mary Magdalene and the other Mary to see the sepulcher." So now we're going to go to Mark, because Mark is going to add some light to what we've just read. Mark 15:43, and we're going to read 15:43-16:2. "Joseph of Arimathea, an honorable counselor, which also waited for the kingdom of God, came and went in boldly unto Pilate, and craved the body of Jesus. And Pilate marvelled if he was already dead, and calling unto him the centurion, he asked him whether he had been any while dead. And when he knew of it from the centurion, he gave the body to Joseph. And Joseph bought fine linen, and took him down, and wrapped him in the linen, and laid him in a sepulcher, which was hewn out of a rock, and rolled a stone unto the door of the sepulcher. And Mary Magdalene, and Mary, the mother of Josh, beheld where he was laid. And when the Sabbath was past, Mary Magdalene and Mary, the mother of James, in Shalom, had brought sweet spices that they might come and anoint him. And very early in the morning, the first day of the week, they came unto the sepulcher at the rising of the sun." You can already see that during the death of Jesus, the Sabbath was being honored as God's holy day, because they took him down on Friday, they put him in the sepulcher, and they came back to anoint his body on Sunday morning. So they rested the Sabbath day. Luke gives us another account. Luke 23:51 says that Joseph of Arimathea, who was of the city of the Jews, who also himself waited for the kingdom of God, "This man went unto Pilate and begged the body of Jesus. And he took it down and wrapped it in linen and laid it in a sepulcher that was hewn in stone, wherein never a man before was laid. And that day was the preparation of the Sabbath." So the Friday is the preparation day of the Sabbath. That's the day they call the preparation day. "And the women also, which came with him from Galilee, followed after, and beheld the sepulcher and how his body was laid. And they returned and prepared spices and anointments, and they rested the Sabbath day according to the commandments." So you can see here that Jesus died on Friday. They took his body down. They put it in the tomb that a man had never been in before. And then they went home, and they rested the Sabbath day. And then they came early Sunday morning to anoint his body and prepare it for burial. Luke 24:1 says, "Now upon the first day of the week, very early in the morning, these women came unto the sepulcher, bringing the spices which they had prepared, and certain others with them." Now we're going to go to John, and John has a little bit of an interesting twist on this, because one of the other reasons that Sunday is proclaimed as a Sabbath is because they said the disciples went to the upper room, and they had a Sunday service, or a worship that day. But I want to read the Bible account of what was really going on that day. So John 19:40 says, "Then took they the body of Jesus, and wound it in linen clothes with spices, as was the manner of the Jews to bury. Now in the place where he was crucified, there was a garden, and in the garden a new sepulcher, wherein never a man was laid. There laid they Jesus, therefore because of the Jews' preparation day, for the sepulcher was nigh at hand. The first day of the week came Mary Magdalene early, when it was yet dark, unto the sepulcher, and seeeth the stone taken away from the sepulcher." So that's just another account of what we saw in Matthew, Mark, and Luke, so this was in John. Now in John, we're going to skip to verse 19, and it says, "Then the same day at evening," in other words, Sunday evening, "being the first day of the week, when the doors were shut, where the disciples were assembled for fear of the Jews, came Jesus and stood in the midst, and saith unto them, 'Peace be unto you.'" So we see that they were assembled for the fear of the Jews. They were afraid that they were going to be killed, just like Jesus. They were behind locked doors, afraid, and Jesus came into them. "In every account of Jesus's death, the Sabbath was kept, before they anointed him with oils and spices. And on Sunday, when they were supposedly having a worship service, it was not a worship service. It was a, they were terrified. They were hiding behind locked doors." This is pretty significant, to identify that they let Jesus's body rest over the Sabbath day, because in Israel, it's very hot, and so bodies decompose very fast, and they don't let them sit around. They anoint them, and they put them in the ground, because they're going to start decaying and smelling bad. But in every account, it says, "He rested the Sabbath, and early the next morning, they came to anoint him." They were in a hurry to get the body down, so that it didn't hang there over Sabbath. So now I want to review some of the things that we've talked about in some of the scriptures that we have just had. It's, first of all, the Sabbath was to honor the end of creation week on the seventh day. That was what the Sabbath was. It says that Jesus kept the Sabbath. The disciples kept the Sabbath after Jesus's death. The Gentiles kept the Sabbath after Jesus's death. All accounts of Jesus's death, those that were following him, kept the Sabbath when he died. But this is not all the evidence that we have on the Sabbath. Next, we're going to go to Hebrew. But before we read Hebrew, I'm going to go back to Exodus 16:14-30, and I want to read the account of Exodus. So do you remember in Exodus, the Jews were coming out of Egypt, and the Lord was trying to get them to keep His Sabbath, and they kept breaking His Sabbath? So let's read that account. And it says, "And when the dew that lay upon the ground, behold," let me get my book up "In the face of the wilderness there lay a small round thing, as small as the hoar frost, on the ground. And when the children of Israel saw it, they said one to another, 'Is it manna? For they wist not what it was.' And Moses said unto them, 'This is the bread which the Lord hath given you to eat; this is the thing which the Lord hath commanded; gather of it every man.'" gather of it every man according to his eating, and omur for every man according to the number of your persons. Take ye every man for them which are in his tents.' And the children of Israel did so, and gathered some more and some less. And when they did, met it with an omur; he that gathered much had nothing over, and he that gathered little had no lack. They gathered every man according to his eating. And Moses said, 'Let no man leave of it until the morning.' Notwithstanding, they hearkened not unto Moses; but some of them left of it until the morning, and it bred worms and stank; and Moses was wrought with them. And they gathered it every morning, every man according to his eating; and when the sun waxed hot, it melted. And it came to pass that on the sixth day, they gathered twice as much bread, two omurs for one man; and all of the rulers of the congregation came and told Moses; and he said unto them, 'This is that which the Lord hath said; tomorrow is the rest of the Holy Sabbath. Unto the Lord, bake that which ye will bake today, and seethe that which ye will seethe; and that which remaineth over, lay up for you to be kept unto the morning.' And they laid it up until the morning, as Moses bade; and it did not stink; neither was there any worm therein. And Moses said, 'Eat that today; for today is the Sabbath unto the Lord; today you shall not find it in the field. Six days you shall gather it; but on the seventh day, which is the Sabbath, in it there shall be none.' And it came to pass that there went out some of the people on the seventh day, for together, and they found none. And the Lord said unto Moses, 'How long refuse you to keep my commandments and my laws?'" So this is known as the days of provocation. So God was trying to tell them, "Six days, go out and gather just what you need. And on the seventh day, gather twice as much, because it's not gonna come on the Sabbath. Gather, do everything you need to do on Friday, the preparation day, so that on the Sabbath, it's a rest, so that you can spend time with me." And yet, Moses kept telling the people, and they kept not doing it. They would go out on Monday, and they would gather twice as much, so they didn't have to gather any on Tuesday. And when they went to eat it, it had worms in it, and it stunk. And on the Sabbath, they didn't go gather double. And when they went out to gather it, it wasn't there. And so they were hungry on the Sabbath. And so he was trying to teach them the principles of resting on the Sabbath day. So this is an account in Exodus. And now, we're gonna go to Hebrew 3, because Hebrew 3 and 4 refers back to the day of provocation in Exodus. So we have Hebrew 3, and we're gonna start with verse 8. Verse 8 says, "Harden not your hearts, as in the day of provocation, in the day of temptation, in the wilderness." So here, it refers back to that day of provocation. And so he said, "The reason the people were not gathering as they should was because their hearts were hardened. They didn't believe what the Lord was telling them. They thought that they knew better than what the Lord, and yet, he was trying to tell them, you know, 'This is my day that you need to worship on.'" Then we're gonna go forward to verse 12. And it says, "Take heed, brethren, lest there be any of you with an evil heart of unbelief, and departing from the living God. But exhort one another daily, while it is said today, lest any of you be hardened through the deceitfulness of sin; for we are partakers of Christ, if we hold the beginning of our confidence steadfast unto the end. While it is said today, if you will hear his voice, harden not your hearts, as in the day of provocation; for some, when they had heard, did provoke, howbeit not all that came out of Egypt by Moses." In other words, not all of them did, but a lot of them did. "But with whom was he grieved forty years? Was it not with them that had sinned, whose carcasses fell in the wilderness, and to whom he swears that they should not enter into his rest, but to them that believed not?" So we see that they could not enter in because of unbelief. So the ones that were, that fell in the wilderness were the ones that didn't believe God. They didn't believe his laws. They didn't believe in his Sabbath. And they provoked him. It says, "Let us therefore fear, lest a promise being left us of entering into his rest, any of you should seem to come short; for unto us was the gospel preached, as well as unto them; but the word preached did not profit them, not being mixed with faith in them that heard it. For we which have believed do enter into rest, as he had said; as I have sworn in my wrath, if they enter not into my rest, although the works were finished from the foundation of the world; for he spake in a certain place of the seventh day on this wise. And God did rest the seventh day from all of his works. And in this place again, if they shall enter into my rest, seeing therefore it remaineth, that some must enter therein, and they to whom it was first preached entered not, because of unbelief." Again, he limited a certain day, saying to David, "Today, after so long a time, as it is said; today, if you will hear his voice, harden not your hearts." For if Jesus had given them rest, then would he not afterwards have spoken of another day? So here, in Hebrew, it's saying, "If God had given them another Sabbath day, wouldn't he have told them? Wouldn't he have told them that he'd changed that day?" It says, "There remaineth therefore a rest to the people of God; for he that is entered into his rest, he also has ceased from his own work, as God did from his. Let us labor therefore to enter that rest, lest any man fall after the same example of unbelief." And so it takes amount of faith. You have to have faith that God's word is truth. You can't even get that faith by yourself. You have to ask the Lord to give you that Isab, to give the Holy Spirit to lead you in faith, to understand and believe what the Bible's saying. But they didn't believe in the day of provocation. Many of them didn't believe. And they were not allowed to come into the promised land. And likewise, today, we have to believe. We have to believe in God's Holy Sabbath day. We have to give him that reverence for us to come into the earth made new. Many people will tell you the Sabbath was for the Jewish people, and that it was of the Old Testament times. This is not so. It was the Jewish people that were willing to follow the Lord and keep his Sabbath in the Old Testament. It was given to the Gentiles to spread the gospel in the New Testament, because the Jews fell short of that and kept the Sabbath only for themselves, instead of sharing it with the world. And God wanted it shared with the world. Mark 2:27 says, "And he said unto them, 'The Sabbath was made for man, and not man for the Sabbath; therefore the Son of Man is Lord of the Sabbath.'" Here's an interesting scripture in Isaiah 66:22 through 23. "For as the new heavens and the new earth, which I will make..." So when are we gonna get the new heaven and the new earth? When Jesus comes again, he's making a new heaven and a new earth. So this is talking about the new earth. It says, "When the world is made new, for as the new heavens and the new earth, which I will make, shall remain before me, saith the Lord, so shall your seed and your name remain; and it shall come to pass, that from one new moon to another..." This is talking about the monthly cycle. We have a new moon every month, and that's how the days are calculated. "From one new moon to another, and from one Sabbath to another..." The Sabbath is talking about the weekly cycle. "Shall all flesh come to worship before me, saith the Lord." So in the new heaven and the new earth, on a weekly and monthly cycle, we are going to come before the Lord, and we're going to worship. When we come before the Lord to worship in the new earth, it will be on the seventh day, Saturday, the Sabbath. The Sabbath has not been done away with, nor will it be done away with. God's Sabbath has not changed ever, and will never change. We don't have enough time to talk about everything on the Sabbath day. I do have some videos that I'm going to try to download on my website for you to watch of the whole history of the Sabbath, as we have it documented, so that you can understand a little bit more about the Sabbath. Next time, we're going to talk about the Sabbath, the seal of God. And I hope that you can come, and that you can hear that study as well. Because the Sabbath is actually God's seal on us. That concludes our study today. Thank you for joining us. Remember, if you have questions, you can contact me at countrylife, peggy@countrylifereasteron.com. And until next time, let us have a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, I just ask that you'll be with us, that you'll help us to come to you, that our minds will be open, that we will receive you, and that we will not be like the people in the wilderness in the day of provocation, that don't believe you and don't have the faith to accept your word. Thank you so much for your love for each one of us, in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you very much.